Thoughts and prayers. I also would like to acknowledge just a couple of retirements that are here on the consent agenda. We have Sue Schultz who will be retiring this year, and then Sue Boach who will also be retiring. We'll certainly recognize during our celebration ceremony and those types of things, but Sue has been with the school district for a long time, if you wish her not to be. But the best. And then also would like to just congratulate. Our one act play had a second place in the section finish, which is wonderful, right? And I always speak with Mr. Hiltner about this. They just keep knocking on the door and I don't know how many second place finishes we've had in the section or third place, you know, they've just done well. They haven't got to that state tournament, but I think that that's going to happen here at some point in time. So congratulations to our one act play. And then finally, this week, I'm sorry, not this week, but the week of February 21st through the February 25th, the Minnesota School Board Association is honoring all school board members from the annual School Board Recognition Week. And we'd like to present you with your certificates. Once again, this year, we do this usually on this date. We're usually a week ahead of that because of our board meeting. But want to say thank you to our school board for the work and your commitment to our students and our community and for all the work that you do. Sometimes it's a thankless job, we all understand that. But I do want to know that you guys are appreciated and I thank you for all the work. So with that said, I'll get to cover out when we get to. Thank you very much. Thank you, congratulations. Thank you for your work. There you go. Thank you for your work. Thank you guys. And I think we need to get a picture after the meeting so nobody leave, okay? Thank you to the tents on you, are there any other elements? Are there none? Any public input, first call, public input related to the agenda? Second call, public input related to the agenda, and third call. Are there none, reports and presentation, me and the education director, Mr. Monchak.
I'm going to try to keep this pretty general here for you since there's kind of a lot if we really went into detail. So I just wanted to start off with the Pantherfield housing community head budget. Current year-to-date through January and then what we actually have budgeted for the whole year. So currently our expenditures are at just under $349,000 and our annual budget is $578,000. We should stay under that from what I'm projecting. Revenue-wise, we're sitting at $320,000 and we're projecting to be at $617,000. I'm hoping we can actually come in higher than that. And we're a little under in revenue right now compared to expenditures just because we do have quite a bit of unaccommoded revenue that will be put in here shortly. And then our spring and summer are always very big, large revenue generators for us. And then I will be sending out more accurate provisions coming in April when we do kind of our last final budget revision. If you guys haven't heard, we did do a lot of upgrading in the field house for equipment-wise. We did, I don't need to go through the list, but we did do 16 new pieces of cardio equipment, including five ellipticals, five treadmills, three bikes, and three climb mills. And then we do actually throughout the year, we did get new dumbbells, benches, racks. And then on the right-hand side of the PowerPoint here, we do have the warranty coverage. So I wanted to make sure we had coverage for all of this. We do have five full years on all our cardio equipment. And strength, majority of it is 10 years and then lifetime on pads, our dumbbells, and then cables. So we do now have the ability to just call someone to fix it and it will be free of charge for us. Some recent upgrades that we did currently in the facility. We did do a new layout in the back two fitness rooms. I'll show you a picture of that. And then we reduced some of the equipment to kind of create more of an open atmosphere. And I'll have an image for that for you as well. And then we added five additional fans for better air circulation upstairs. It actually has helped quite a bit this past summer. And then we did add this commentary area. If you go into the field house, we added a new TV just for some advertising so we can catch the eyes of the members as they're walking out. So here's a couple images. I know they're not the best, but you can kind of see the open area. And we still kept it in the same roles and wrapped our cardio. And that's one of the new pieces of equipment on the right. So we reduced the equipment, but that one machine right there takes the place of five pieces of equipment. So that was actually a very great addition that members are very happy to see. And then now that just gives you a better idea of where you can do, create plyometrics, different workouts there. That will, well, that actually has helped out quite a bit even if people want to go in there and stretch. And then you can see in the background, the treadmills and ellipticals that we have. And we do have our climb mills coming in on Wednesday. Here's the two back rooms again. The images aren't that great, but last time that I was here with you guys, we had the dumbbells and the platforms in the back room. Now we created it completely separate and it does help out when we do have athletics in there. If they want to block off those two back rooms to create their own team workouts. It's actually ended up working out pretty well the last couple of years. Some upcoming plans that we do have for the field house. We are looking at currently getting quotes for new commentary area flooring and front desk replacements. And then we're always going to be looking at strength equipment planning. We are looking at the equipment being around 20 years old at this point. They're still doing very well, but they're definitely be on the last straw. Two things here waiting on, we've been putting it on hold because of COVID, but we are looking at contracted services for personal training. And then Fitness On Demand, which is the two images on the site. It's becoming very popular in fitness places. Instead of paying an instructor, it's an actual virtual class that is live. You can log into it and select any class you want that's going on throughout the nation. So it's actually pretty unique and it's very inexpensive for us to keep and it might draw some more new members. Going more into community head now, here's the different avenues that we have for advertising. Currently we have digital flyers and we have specific flyers. Recently we have the one that's more signature to our district for our youth rec and enrichment. And then now we just created an active adult one that we can send out. We're slowly creating that list to get larger so we can send out specific ones for our adult rec and enrichment. And then we do have a digital book. It will be uploaded on our website so that can be downloadable. We can email it out or we will have printable copies for individuals that come in. And we are currently in the process of creating a community email. So if anybody that's not on the district email or from another community wants to be involved with it, they can send us the email and we'll create that separate to send out to them. And then of course, we still do have our website which we update daily. And same with our social media postings. And then of course, you guys did see the field house TV that we're going to also have advertising on. Youth rec, I just want to touch briefly on a couple of things. We are seeing an increase in numbers since COVID is starting. Well, we're slowly starting to see it settle down a little bit. A couple of things we did differently is we created an in-home soccer program, not just a traveling. And we actually seen our numbers almost double. And what all we did is we eliminated the weekends off of it. A lot of parents have been wanting to have less weekends of traveling. So we're going to possibly try to do that with a couple of their activities and just see how they do. We created our community gymnastics program and we turned it into a year-round program instead of just a few months to keep gym three busy. And then our golf program we created last year. We had roughly for our first year just under 100 participants, which was a huge program for us for our first year. And then I didn't include the map so you can kind of see the, I know it's very small, but incorporating the quad fields now that we have the parking lot out there. We're going to be utilizing that for youth soccer and baseball and just kind of try to keep some traffic congestion out of the parking lot back here with other activities. And then I just wanted to put it in there. We've been slowly doing it just like the rest of the row. We have to slowly start increasing fees. I'm not expecting a lot, but just enough to keep our expenses covered. So hopefully if it's a few dollars here and there, but it's nothing going to be really drastic. Youth enrichment side, we've been working to try to grow this program. I know we've talked about it at advisory council meetings. Right now, we're applying for a $10,000 grant plus a couple other $500,000 grants. The $10,000 one is strictly for technology and other equipment. So we're hoping we could possibly create some new innovative classes and possibly give some free participation to try to grow them. And the other grants are just for new supplies and really what we want to do with them. Current successful programs that we do have that consistently run in enrichment is art club, our babysitting class, our home alone class. And then we, over COVID, we started online STEM classes that pair with other school districts and we've had a decent amount of participation in them. Adult rec and enrichment, this is always a tough one too. Pickleball league is growing. We're starting to see a lot more participation in there, which is great to see. We've added a couple courts in the field house. And then of course, we got lines painted out in the tennis court. Karate has always been a very consistent class for us now that the karate program is in town too. We've seen a little decrease, but it's still doing well. Driver disc home is always consistent in growing. That class actually, we're seeing anywhere from 20 to 30 participants in it, which is becoming very popular. And then multiple independent leagues through other associations, that's really what helps us. And when we have softball leagues in the community, basketball leagues, those are already all ran. Where if we try to do, we pull them away and kill those other programs. So we want to still keep other things going in the community. And then we're looking into different options. So if it's technology classes, trade classes, crafts, any type of rec opportunities that we can help try to grow in here. Aquatics, we do offer year-round private lessons now. We are going to offer a group session once a month continuing after the summer lessons that we have currently planned. And then we're offering PAC lessons as well. We do luckily, John Ashley's daughter is one of them. We do have lifeguards to actually fill up our whole week for lap swim and open swim, which has been very difficult to do. And now we're actually going to offer a WSI instruction course. And if you know anybody that wants to go through our program, we will cover the cost of that instruction so they can be an instructor for community head. And then we're just hoping that class will also help grow our instructor pool. Going on the PAC, our current enrollment right now is around 40 to 50. We're looking for more staff to help grow the program currently with the staff that we have. We can't get any larger. And then right now, we're in the process for planning our summer trips and we still have to watch COVID restrictions. A lot of them aren't taking a group that big besides outdoor parks. And then we're offering PACs on lessons, which I mentioned before. And then we're discussing new equipment options. And this is just a climbing wall. It's becoming very popular. It's probably, Michelle and I have talked about it, maybe something less permanent, but just some other options just to create some more activities for the kids to do. And then one other thing, PAC too, with all the state funding that's coming in, we have received quite a bit and we're continuing to get it in. We just received a $4,000 grant for, that we probably shouldn't have received anyway based on the numbers that we have, but we'll definitely take it. But we've probably had around $20,000 to $30,000 in state funding through just COVID expenses that helped us out. And then lastly here, I just wanted to cover on trips. If you haven't heard, we're doing a New York trip and we're working with Jeff Iverson on this. It's July 18th to the 22nd. It includes three Broadway shows, five scenic tours at some of the most popular locations in New York. And then we did fill it up in three, roughly three to four weeks and it's 15, 15 per person. And we have 34 people attending right now. And then we just partnered with Jolly Ramblers out of Lester Prairie to host five shows. And then they're hosted out of Burnsville and St. Cloud. And then we're, right now we're partnering with West AB Consortium to host a deluge over there hiking trip, just to try to create some new opportunities now that COVID's seemed to be the restrictions are getting a little bit less. So now we're able to offer a few other opportunities. Other than that, that's all I have for you guys. Do you have any questions?
A trip to New York, you pulled off a, that's pretty busy.
Yeah, we had probably 20 to 25 people sign up within the first few days, so. Yeah, it was awesome. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go on to the administration and community reports, this is manager center.
Yeah, good evening. Matt's done a great work, a lot of great work with the budget. So I appreciate all his input and his revisions on the budget. So we're slowly getting him trained in, so he's done a good job. Start off with, we had a facilities meeting a couple of weeks ago. So I'm just going to kind of go through some of our upcoming projects that we've approved and are moving ahead with for this coming spring and summer, depending on when they all get scheduled. We have one rooftop air handler coil that's going to get replaced in on the high school. That will happen in hopefully June. We're going to do a little bit of tennis court maintenance and cleaning this summer. It's about a cost of $7,300. And then after he was here, his recommendation is in two years, we should look at resurfacing those courts because of the age of them. So we'll be looking at, you know, a higher cost to get that done. For right now, we're going to take care of a few of the cracks and then get them cleaned. We'll come in and really power wash them off and get them clean and ready for tennis and pickleball. We're going to be doing resurfacing on the track because that's reached the age where it needs to be resurfaced. We don't have to do a complete dig out of the whole track like we did it back in 2013 when we did it. That'll cost us about $61,000. We're also going to be doing asphalt in the handicap football parking area. And then all the asphalt that's around the athletic complex. So anything that goes around the track, under the bleachers, black side of the bleachers, the walkway up there. So anything that's currently asphalt, we'll get a new seal code on that. And that has not been done since I've been here, so it's time. We've done the football, the parking lot itself a few times, or a couple of times. But the rest of that hasn't been done, so it'll be time to get that all done. Again, it's not having traffic, so you know, you get a lot more years out of that. But it is time because some of the cracks we're seeing. We're going to be doing at Lakeside, the outdoor lighting on the building itself. There's 18 wall packs and right now there's about seven that are already burnt out. We're going to get those replaced and put in the LED light packs there. We're going to finish the last phase of our auditorium stage lighting. That'll get taken care of. And then back up at Lakeside, we're going to finish the last set of bathrooms as far as the remodel up there to give them new, you know, fixtures and paint and everything that we've kind of been doing. So that'll be the last set of bathrooms up there. And then also at Lakeside, the classroom ceilings. We'll finish up the north hallway, the far north hallway. Last summer we did the north side of that hallway. This summer we're going to take care of the south side of the north hallway, if that makes sense. So where Gary Patterson, Lori Moore is, and then there's a couple smaller little rooms, reading rooms and stuff along there. So then that will take care of that whole wing and then that will be done. So we're, you know, continuing with our rotation and getting that done. At the high school, we are going to start what we're calling phase one of replacing the high school lockers because a lot of our high school lockers are in bad shape. Hard to get parts for them anymore. They're just getting, getting, looking really rough. So we're going to start phase one of the worst hallway. Those are on order already. We'll be doing a little bit of cement work, we're hoping. Still waiting to try to get prices on that. So there's a couple of other things that we're still working on prices. But we got a good list going and this is all using our long-term facilities maintenance money to fund these projects. So that's a good revenue source for us to be able to keep doing some of these things and keep up with the upgrade. So, did I miss anything on Jason and JB on that? That's kind of a summary of what we talked about that we decided to move ahead with. So those are the bigger ticket items. Of course, they'll do the normal carpet rotations and some of those smaller ones. And we also held a finance meeting with Clark and Jason. I provided the rest of the board members here with a budget, or Clark and JB, sorry, an updated budget book. So what I gave you, the rest of the board, is a shortened version of the budget book. The long, the big full packet, I didn't run off for everybody. I do have that posted on the website, on the GSL website under administrative tabs. It's out there. A lot of what makes up that bigger book is all the history that I've kept in there for the number of years. So you can still go out there and find it. If you have your old book, you've still got it because the history hasn't changed. So what's in the shortened version is just all the updates. If you want the other version printed off, just let me know. I just wasn't going to waste a lot of paper if you're comfortable just looking at your old one or looking it up on the website. Also at our finance meeting, we talked about our current budget, our revisions that have been made. We're still projecting right now about a 22% fund balance to end this year. So a strong financial shape for the school district. And then we're starting to put numbers down for our FY '23 budget. We are meeting this week now with our administrative team to really start narrowing down enrollment, class sizes, current staffing, staff that might be leaving, retiring, like Mrs. Boach. We'll be starting to put all those pieces together and how does that look with our budget moving forward? So we're working on that. The other big piece that is our unknown is legislation. What's going to happen? Are we going to get more money? Have you started to follow any of the legislation already? You know, there's a lot of talk about how everybody wants to spend the budget surplus. Because this is the second year of the biennium, technically they do not have to approve any budget bill as far as schools go. So they could end the session and be done and we might not get anything. But I really think there will be something that's going to come to schools. You know, additional formula allowance, additional special ed funding. But time will tell and we'll see how that all plays out. So I get to look into the crystal ball and decide what number to drop into that revenue budget as a projection. So that kind of changes every day. So we'll see how that goes out. The other piece of the budget, of course, is the Esri dollars that we still have to try to balance. We're using some of those dollars to help us balance the budget. So we have to have a lot of discussion on the use of those dollars. We have our plan in place. We know that we want to keep focusing the best we can on student needs. As they finish their benchmarking and as we see how the kids come out this spring as far as student needs, where are the principals going to see the highest need? Do we need more mental health? Do we need more curriculum? You know, where are we missing the boat here and what else can we focus some of those Esri dollars on? So we're hoping right now to use some of those Esri dollars to continue to fund the couple of positions we added for student support service last year. And then hopefully maintain some of those smaller class sizes because I think we all feel is really helping kids at this point to get a little more attention. And then we'll also take a close look at enrollment, like I mentioned. You know, right now, based on current year numbers, we're probably going to drop it again a little bit next year. Again, some of that is wait and see. We have to wait on kindergarten roundup, which will happen in March. And then also are there maybe a few more families that might now be comfortable coming back to school that maybe have been homeschooling or doing an online program? So some of those unknowns are going to remain unknown until next September. But we're going to do the best we can to pinpoint some of those numbers so that FY '23 budget, we'll be working on real hard here the next six weeks or so. We've also worked out agreements for our 4.0 grounds contract and a revision to our Dasher management contract. Those will be coming to the March board meeting as we finalize the paperwork on those. I had my required bid meeting for food service to go through the request for proposals. That was held last week. Had three potential bidders come to the meeting. Not saying that they're all going to bid, but that we had three that came. So we went through that, gave them a tour of the kitchen here, answered a lot of questions. I think it went very well, so we'll see how that goes through. We also just received the contracts from the Southwest West Central Service Cooperative came last week in the mail, or email. So we'll be reviewing them and have recommendations for you at the March board meeting on those contracts as well to decide how much time we need from the co-op for certain areas. And then my other couple items are on the agenda, which would be the solar contract and then the land lease. So questions? It's been busy. February, January used to be kind of quiet. It's not so quiet anymore. It's a lot of things to take care of and gets squared away.
I have a question. Did anyone ever come up with a final number as far as how many families did sign up for the Stars program?
We were about 25.
25 families or 25 students?
Students.
Students.
Yeah, students.
And that is a little different because we do have some families that do their own online program. They signed up with a different online school. The Star students we count as part of our enrollment because we're paying the bill for them. Families that register on their own to a different online program, then we don't count them as our students.
And then when, when do we have to decide whether or not we're going to offer the Stars program again next year?
In March.
March?
Yep, because it'll be part of the service.
That's part of our discussion here that we're going to be talking about what we're going to do for that. There's been some advantages to it and at the same time, there's been some challenges.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because it's part of one of the contracts with the service cooperative. So we'll have that recommendation to you by March. The reason we put them on the March agenda is the co-op has to kind of follow the same timelines as far as notifying staff. They need to notify staff by able to meet those requirements if they need to let somebody go, you know, move people around, all they do. So they need to know from the schools that are part of the co-op, okay, how much services do you need? Are you dropping, say, a psychologist or a social worker depending on what you have contracted with the co-op? So they can notify their staff. So that's why they have kind of strict timelines like that. It, you know, puts us in a, hey, we got to make a decision here by March. So the next couple of weeks, we'll have a lot of discussions about the services and how much time we need for PT and OT and EPH and heart of hearing, those type of things. So we'll hammer through that.
Michelle, can you, the Esri money, the different pots of Esri money be used for staff development?
Yep, it can. So I was just actually telling Bill, one of our pots of money that I was listening in on today is for summer programming. And they said to make sure you include some time to pay your staff for some summer training. So say, and I know we've talked or we're looking at maybe some little bit of new curriculum for the summer programs, depending on how they want to focus it. So you can bring staff in to do a little bit of training on that piece. Some of the lost instructional bucket of money, you can also use a little bit of that for some staff development training time, depending on, you know, because that's, your lost instructional time money can only be used for after-school evening and summer. So you can train some staff. Say you want to really focus in on some social and mental health skills or something and you need some extra training for staff, so you can do that as well. We don't have a lot of our money budgeted right now in the big Esri bucket for staff development because we kind of went a different direction because we have quite a bit of regular staff development. Now that's kind of gotten eaten away a little bit faster this year because with the settlement of the master contract, we upped the reimbursement rates to staff for a staff development day. So we were at, you know, if you came in and did a math curriculum training or a reading training in the summer or Saturday, then you were paid $100 for that day. That's now increased to $200 a day for a staff member. So that kind of ate up, especially the elementary budgets real fast this year because they already had all those staff development days planned for the math curriculum this past summer. Now all of a sudden, they're kind of out of their staff development bucket, but Mr. Foss kind of lends them money when he needs to. So we've also got the pot that's controlled by superintendent, you know, that's kind of district control. So we've got that to use as well. So we have carried over a fund balance in staff development from last year. We have to reserve 2% of our gen ed formula for staff development. So that equals a little over $200,000 right now that goes strictly for staff development. So we cover quite a bit of training. We're not depending on the needs that they see, additional training of the staff. We try to make sure that's all covered. So it's very, very rare that we ever say no to a staff member for getting some additional training. So we're fortunate right now that we can do that.
And that staff development is different than preparatory, right? I mean, it's actual training for different topics and/or the curriculum. It's not necessarily preparatory that they are preparing lessons or so forth on their own. It's actual training, right?
So the one summer bucket of money, you can do staff training ahead of time. So say they purchase a new piece of either curriculum. They can bring in staff a couple of days, two, three days, whatever they decide is needed. And we can use that money to pay for that. And then they also, we kind of found out today, you can include prep time. So if a teacher's coming in to teach summer school, they get some prep time each day for that, which is kind of new. We've never really had a lot of budget for that when we were part of just target services summer school. So right now we've got some, you know, nice buckets of money to really focus, really expand summer school if that's the direction we go. You can expand enrichment to include field trips. You can expand enrichment to include field trips. There's just a lot of different avenues that they're working on right now. The summer school budget, they have to have to be by March 7th. Again, we got a short window that has to be, I have to have that application done and turned in.
And the reason that I asked the question about the dollars with regard to ESTR is because since it is one-time money, it's how do you get your bank for your buck? And so with staff development, if we're developing the staff we have in areas of social, emotional learning, when we have the NWA map testing, when we have the MCA testing and we see results of that, and we see any types of results of loss of learning, staff development toward differentiation and things like that of the current staff we have would be helpful in addressing some of those needs that we will be seeing coming up in data flagging that we're doing, in data mining that we're doing. So that's why I asked the question about using staff development and getting bank for our buck with our current development or current staff.
So, you know, your, the summer bucket of money, that training is only going to be for those teachers that are teaching summer school. But you're right, there's some other buckets that we'd be able to do that. And I think that, like you mentioned, the testing, the winter benchmarking, the principals are going to be able to pull a lot of data from that to see where we need to focus some of that additional training on for staff. Right now, it's, they're tired, so they're not really thinking of, hey, I need more training right now. But as we get into the spring and once they reach out for those staff that are interested in teaching the summer school, you know, then we'll focus more on getting some of that training and.
You bring up a good point, you know, between the summer training, a little bit of the construction during the summer, and then the training of the staff that are currently teaching throughout the school year. And whether that's a staff, you know, a use of staff development dollars for a staff development day versus staff members going on their own and getting trained weekends or evenings or whatever the case may be by choice. But I'm suggesting the full staff development so that once again, they're all kind of hearing the same message, they're all getting trained and they're all getting prepared for what the data mining will show the needs will be for the GSL development.
And I'm sure between the principals, the next couple of months, they'll be laying out some of that summer training as well. All right, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to your principal reports. Professor Butler?
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Jason. Good evening. Jamie, I'll tell you one piece we're looking at elementary-wide. I should say Lincoln is SMART stimulating maturity accelerated readiness training. We're seeing a need in the area of gross motor and fine motor. So that's one piece that we'll be looking at. We're right in the beginning stages of that though. Staff, based on what staff are seeing and teachers asking, so. Yeah, thank you for that question. The report you have in front of you, I will highlight some of the main points. Of course, questions are welcome throughout. Our leadership teams have been working on planning Lincoln learners at K through two and Panthers after school at Lakeside for trimester three. You can see at Lincoln, our focus is kindergarten, reading, math, and there is SMART, which I just mentioned, as well as social, emotional learning. At Lakeside, we're going to focus on general academic support along with some really interesting enrichment that kids are really buying into at their Legos, Spanish and STEM. Michelle, you mentioned benchmarking, and we're just about finished with gathering and entering our winter data. So I will have our local academic norms and reference points in March for all of us to review. Looking at the social, emotional learning, you can see we've had our Panther pride recognition at Lincoln and Lakeside earlier in February. It's nice to bring families in and have that surprise when the kids see mom and dad coming in the building. Let's go down on the curriculum and assessment. Our WEDA for English learners, the access assessment will begin soon, next week, a week from tomorrow. And then MCA will begin at Lakeside at the end of March. Joy is working on that schedule right now. Minnesota Reading Corps at the very bottom. Those applications have been submitted and really hopeful of getting quality candidates for 22 and 23 at both buildings. I'll go to the back and I'll finish up with school community partnership and then acknowledgements. February is just a super busy month. Had some good conversations with teachers on all the way back into February. We've had conferences last week. We've got Winter Fest next week and then I love to read and Dr. Swiss birthday a week after. And kindergarten roundup, one of my favorite days of the year is on Thursday, March 10th. You know, I hesitate that mathematical formula that had worked for about 10 years. Take the number of letters times 2/3 and that would give us our kindergarten class. If that were to come back this year with accuracy, we'd have a class of about 110. But we'll wait and see and see what enrollment is on that evening of Thursday, March 10th. Finally, acknowledgements. The elementary PTO is really active. One of the things they did for staff, we had an evening meal at both buildings on September 10th for conferences and oh, February 10th, thank you. And then teaching staff for English learners and Panthers after school. What questions do you have?
Bill, I immediately need to correct myself and you can help with that. I had mentioned MCA collecting and data mining of that and then I mentioned NWA map testing. We no longer do NWA map testing. It's really fast, great, everything in math, right?
That is, that is correct, Jamie.
Okay, so I'm correcting myself.
Yes.
It's no longer NWA map testing and parallel to that and I'm now faster at NWA map. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Foss?
No, I just have a question in terms of attendance for conferences. What kind of percentage did you?
Yeah, so physical, physical attendance was.
Just either whether you did over the phone, virtual, what percent connected with the actual pastor teacher?
Yeah, 95. And then the other, the other families, 95% be connected with phone call, sending home, mailing, offer of another conference.
And then did you have the choice of virtual or in-person?
Yes. We had a hand, just a hand at both buildings. We chose virtual.
You chose virtual with your kids or your children are going to school with you?
That's right. That's right. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to start right away to kind of address the question that Jamie had as well with ESTR dollars and staff development and what we're doing with it and getting bank for a buck. One of the things I'm looking at the 7/12 level is showing, we have, we have an in-service day on the 7th, March 7th, showing a movie called TANX. This is something that's been around the area a couple of different times in the last several years, mostly put on by an association called To Be Continued. And basically what it does is it looks at anxiety and the effects it has on students as they go through kind of their everyday life as well as at school. So that's something that we'll be showing here at the 7/12 setting on March 7th that we'll be using our professional development dollars to do that. And it'll, again, go out to all the staff we have at my level. Kind of talking about some other things here at my level. Panthers After Dark is still happening. This is a program that was put into place last year due to some of the credit deficient students that we've had because of COVID. So this continues to be offered every Tuesday and Thursday in the high school media center from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. We have 32 students involved in our credit recovery program through Panthers After Dark right now. That doesn't mean that we've only awarded 32 credits. That's 32 students. Many of those students are needing more than one recovery program online. Many of those students have completed more than one recovery program online, which for this year has been exceptionally beneficial. GSL is not alone in their struggle with dealing with credit deficient students due to the pandemic. Our ALCs are fault. Our referrals are not able to match the needs that we've had. So we've been able to kind of bridge the gap with using the referrals that we have at the La Cunha Area Learning Center. And when we've kind of met where the quota is, they're not able to take anymore, we've been able to work with our students. Sarah Beckman is our student support specialist, our counselor, myself, Dan Siloto, all work with these students of their credit recovery programs. And it has saved a lot of students who are going to be walking across the stage from graduation here in, later this year, that I don't think would have met that without that program and without those individuals. We do have our Enrich Challenge Learn program. This is something that's been around for quite some time here at GSL. It's our ECL program. That happens every Monday through Thursday in the media center as well from 3:30 to 4:30. And that's a homework help program. With both of these, Panthers After Dark and with the ECL program, in addition to our certified staff, we have non-certified staff that are there to help. We also have upper-class NHS volunteers that are there to help as well with anybody that is struggling with some, some in-class coursework that they just need help with, there's some tutoring. We do have NHS volunteers that are there. Jeff Iverson has worked very closely with myself and with the staff of these two programs to make that happen. So thank you to Jeff for that. With February means that testing season is right around the corner at the 7/12 level. So below is just a very brief overview of some of the testing that's going to be happening here in the next coming months. All of this is coordinated through our district assessment coordinator, and that's Dan Siloto. One of the items that we'll be testing for is our access for ELLs. So this is going to be the test to see if individuals are still qualified or continue to qualify for ELL support. And also identifies any new students or new needs that will be there. Our MCAs, or our Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, will be starting here in about March. One side note for this, GSL is still responsible for offering our MCA testing to all our students who are enrolled in the Stars program. They either need to come in and take that and we can accommodate if they do not want to be in the building with all the others, we can make accommodations in testing windows for them. Otherwise, they do have the option to opt out of taking the MCAs as does any other learner as well. We'll be offering our FAST screening. This is a really comprehensive screening. We have offered this to, this fall, we offered it to all of our 7th, 8th, 9th and 10th graders. So in the past, we started with 7th and 8th, it climbed to 7th through 9th, and this year we're at 7th through 10th. The data we use at the 7th and 8th grade levels to qualify students for title services. The data that we gain from these screeners at the 9th and 10th grade levels are used in our SMT process to the child find process and identifying anybody if they may need special education services or if we do have a student already in 9th or 10th grade on an IEP. We look at this data to help drive some of the IEP goals that are written for those students. We do plan to screen all of our 7th through 10th grade students again here in the spring to progress monitor where they came in in the fall and where they're going all here in the spring. And then lastly, with our testing updates here, we do have ACT we're offering again to all of our juniors at GSL. The ACT testing is going to be equal fifth for our GSL students. And I just met with all of our juniors today during wrap. Myself and Brittany Schmidt, the counselor, talked with them and sent home permission forms to all the families via the students. That will be school reach out tomorrow as well. So the same permission form that the students received today. It'll also be school reach for the students again tomorrow as well as their parents so they have that information. Once we receive the registration forms back in about two weeks, they'll share more detailed information about when to arrive, when to expect to be done, what is appropriate to bring in, what's not appropriate to bring in. But right now, the information they have is that it's on the 5th. At the point on taking it, there's some kind of crucial dates that was put on there for them. In the past, we have always offered a free ACTs test for any individual that completed 70% or more on an online practice module that we have here through Adventum. We're going to offer that again here at GSL. Over the four years that I've been here, the students who have conducted the 70% work have scored higher on their ACT than those who have chosen not, as well as those who receive free reduced lunch here at GSL if we have the paperwork in file, that test will be free for them. Otherwise, if they are not in free reduced and they have not concluded the online test modules, that will be $48 for them to take the test here through GSL. Our registration process is complete. All students have registered, both online and via paper. We are currently determining courses and sections for the 22, 23 school year. So basically what it means is if we have 140 kids signed up for biology, how many sections are we going to offer that in? What electives ran, what electives didn't run? Once all these courses are identified, I then give this to our departments during their PLCs. They build the schedule as far as who's going to teach what. I have not dictated that to them. Obviously licensure takes an effect in here. I can't have somebody who's not licensed teaching something. This is what we've done in the past. We should have what we need to start building our master schedule by about the middle of March, which is great because it's crazy to think, but then we can start planning and scheduling for next school year already. Last month, I did talk to you about our junior senior high Winter Fest. This is historically the week of President's Day in February. Pete Gibson did reach out to me through the band, through the music department and said they have a number of fairly large performances coming up. And he was very worried that Winter Fest would kind of impede some of the practices that we'd have and he asked if I could move that to later in the school year. And I want to support Pete and Jeff Iverson as much as I can in the music department. So we are going to be moving Winter Fest to later in March to ensure that they get as much practice time in as they need. They do have their trip coming up to Florida as well the first week in March. So just got an update to use the board that that will be back just a little bit. And then lastly, with our school community partnership, this is out quite a ways yet, but I did want to put it on this update. We do have our last blood drive of the year unless we do choose to do it over the summer, which we are talking about. The blood drive will be held April 8th and that is run by our student council here at GSL. What questions do you guys have as a board for me?
I just like, I said, thank you. I got a form that I was told I would need to sign before I came this afternoon about the ACT test and I didn't understand the practice modules and if you complete 75%, so I want to thank you because that clearly was a lot of fun.
So when, when the, when the school reach goes out tomorrow, I'll also be, it'll be, it'll be the same form you sent today, John, but it'll also be a video of me talking that explains this and letting, letting parents know that once this form comes back filled out, the student then will receive a, basically a login certificate from me with all the information they need. It'll have their website, it'll have their username, it'll have their password. Everything will be all set up for them. They can log in, they can practice their science, their English, their math, whichever they choose to focus their attention on. So thanks for bringing that up because I should have clarified as well that it won't just be, hey, here's a piece of paper, this is what we're doing. It'll also be a phoning ahead of me talking about this is what this means.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just have a question on registration for high school. So when you say currently determining courses and sections, so are there new courses that some teachers have put together here that are offering? And if so, what would those be for 22 and 23 school year?
Yeah, so we always have new course selections that are put in our registration guide. Doesn't always mean that they're wrong. Typically, when a new course is put in, it takes about three years before to actually get enough traction to run and fill. You know, we look at class sizes differently a little bit when we're looking at a mainstream course, like a shop class where there's saws and welding and things like that, safety comes to be issues. But one of the examples I'll give, Richard Smith has talked about a coding class and we've offered coding at the junior high level. I think this was the second year that this coding class was in the registration guide. The numbers from the first year to this year have climbed. So we look at, is it enough now to offer? Is it not enough to offer? Do we need to wait another year and continue to build that program to get people to sign up? One of the examples I would give, the new class that was put in the registration guide and did run is currently running this year. Kevin Lamont is our industrial tech teacher and he came up with the idea last year for a home decor class. And basically what it is, it's a shop class geared more towards girls that may not want to be in a shop class with a whole bunch of boys that are more comfortable around these tools. And they get to pick kind of a project once they learn through, you know, how do you use a hand drill, how do you use a table saw, how do you use a chop saw? They picked their own project and they built it. And that was a program and he advertised it a lot. He was in the lunchroom talking to people. He was letting people know that this was going to happen. It filled in its first year. I don't want to share a lot of numbers because they haven't been on public yet, but I will share this. He ran that program this year, I believe he had about 22 kids that had signed up for it. And it is not specific to girls, but it's mostly girls that do take it. So this year, we had one boy take it and 21 girls. The numbers in that program for next year are 58. So he went from not having it to 22 to 58. So when I talk about, you know, courses and sections. know, courses and sections, that's what I'm talking about is are we going to be offering a new course that hasn't been there like home decor? And then if we are going to offer it, how many sections are we going to have? Because this year Kevin has one section of home decor. Next year with fifty-eight, he's going to need to have several sections of home decor to make sure that those students who chose to have it in their schedule can get in safely in the shop.
Mr. Boss, I just, we agreed. My daughter came home when she was still in love with that, you know, that she said home decor. And I looked there and I'm like, what are you talking about? But she explained it and she was really excited. She really wanted to take it. We were here, I was here for a MJ centers in our tent and I talked to a couple of girls. They were carrying the projects up to their vehicle, put them in their vehicle and the couple of girls, they thought it was fantastic. They were over the top. They thought it was such a good experience. They didn't feel like, you know, the guys are there that they felt, you know, they had to back off and let them shake forward and take their stuff. They really enjoyed the class.
It's, it's kind of, it's had a domino effect in a good way. And I know this doesn't answer your question specifically, Clark, because it was about courses and sections, but we kind of got on a tangent with home decor. Not only did, did the numbers for home decor next year go up, our numbers for Woods A, B, and C have gone up because now the girls that have gone through this or the individuals that have gone through this course now feel more comfortable and they have registered for Woods A, which is a great problem to have. There's more numbers, which means we need to talk about more sections of that being.
So, I, I don't know what the board approved, you know, increasing the amount of credits that were required for kids on graduation. So, when we have this being the first year of registration, are we going to be seeing that more classes because they need more credits?
So, what we did, I think this was approved in July or August is when that was approved. It grandfathered in. So, our individuals who were already in high school, they need to have thirty credits to graduate from high school. That was when we offered each class a half a credit. What we did is we took and each class is now worth one credit. So, we just, we just doubled everything. Individuals last year that were either ninth through eleventh grade, now instead of needing thirty credits to graduate, need sixty credits to graduate. For them, nothing has changed. They're still taking classes. They're still on course to graduate. For individuals that are currently in ninth grade, they need sixty-six credits to graduate and there is not more offerings that they can take. It's not like, hey, they're going to now take more courses. That was a correction because years ago, probably twenty years ago, when they switched from, maybe not that many, fifteen years ago, when they switched from semesters to trimesters, the opportunity to gain credit went up. So, you could earn more credit, but it was never adjusted at that point in time. So, students were graduating from GSL with fourteen more credits than they needed to graduate, which was causing a bunch of compounded issues with students not wanting to be full-time when they were seniors, students wanting to graduate early, which are, are fine things to do, but it was a bigger issue than it should have been because the, the credits were never addressed when they moved from semesters to trimesters in the past.
You mentioned Panthers After Dark and the ECL program. How about Panther Power Hour? How is that looking? Are we catching kids now and assigning them to meet during Panther Power Hour with staff members versus this kind of being optional or sort of fun student to follow that?
So, the answer to that question is yes and no. And I'm going to explain why. Panther Power Hour probably three weeks ago turned into just RAP class. And if you're not familiar with what RAP is, that's basically our advisory. So, we used to hold advisory on just Mondays and then Tuesdays to Fridays, they would have power hour, which was their hour to eat lunch. And then they could be active, they could be in the commons or they could get one-to-one help from teachers. I am not going to hypoact that this year has been exceptionally difficult with behaviors. This year has been exceptionally difficult with students following basic expectations. And GSL is not alone in this struggle. This is something that I've talked to many area principals about. And one of the things that I talked to students about several times was Panther Power Hour is a privilege and it is not a right right now. I need to see you using this. I need to see you using it in a way that's benefiting you as a student and in a way that's benefiting us as a school. And they did not follow those, those expectations. So, we have not had power hour for the last two and a half weeks. I do have a plan to re-roll this back out, but when I do roll it back out, it'll be for our juniors and seniors first. If they can meet these expectations, then we'll roll it back to our ninth and tenth graders. With that being said, right now with RAP happening every single day, these students are assigned to their own advisory. They need to go into that advisory. What's happening with that is if they have missing assignments, our RAP teachers are able to look at that and say, I need you to go see Mr. Johnson because you're missing a lot of your math assignments right now. So, I'm going to write you a pass. You're going to go to Mr. Johnson. Those students then take that pass and they go to that RAP class. So, it's more structured in the fact that they're able to get the help. We're still getting help. They are assigned to that because if they don't show up to their RAP, they're marked unexcused, which has its own consequences with detentions and truancy and things like that. But, it's not under the guise of Panther Power Hour right now. We are under advisory each day of the week and hopeful that we can bring Power Hour back. But, at the same time, I need to see some improved expectations at school and improved level of respect for each other, for themselves and for the staff member of the school before we bring that back as well.
So, when we change eligibility to just simply passing, where are we at with that as far as how our numbers looking? You know, are we able to track? Because we're not having the Panther Power Hour right now, are we able to track as well how many students are still struggling with simply passing?
I guess I don't understand that question.
So, how many students, do we know how many students that we have that are struggling right now with simply passing? Since we've changed it with regard to eligibility, before we had it as a different standard or outcome or expectation. Now, we've got it simply as pass fail. Do we know right now how many students we currently have struggling to simply pass?
Yeah, I mean, we can run grade reports. Is this a separate question from Power Hour or is this still talking about Power Hour?
It would be separate, but somewhat related. It's separate in the sense that do we know how many we have and what are those numbers looking like now? But, it's somewhat related because Panther Power Hour was a way of tracking and tracing and giving help for those students. So, question A is, how many students do we have? And now that we don't have that, I guess your answer was that we're doing the RAP delivery model or the RAP sending students to where they need to go?
Yeah, so I'm sure I can pull the data. I didn't pull a report. I didn't know I was going to get absent eligibility today. I can look into that if you want, Jamie. But, I would say that students are, how do I want to word this? More easily tracked under this model that if they're not passing, they're getting the help they need. Before, it would be more of, I need to track them down or Mr. Schwartz needs to track them down or Mr. Spolter or Mr. Beckman. Here, they're assigned to a class. So, if they don't show up to it, they're getting marked tardy or absent if they're not there, which then goes to our system in Infinite Campus, which then alerts me right away. Once they're looked at, they're graded, missing assignments, passing, failure, whatever it may be, then they're able to be given a pass and they have to take that pass and go to that teacher's classroom. So, if they get a pass to go to Mr. Johnson's room and they lose it, but they don't show up to Mr. Johnson's room, they're going to be marked unexcused for that as well because they're not where they're supposed to be. So, I can get you the report on pass fails right now, but I would say to answer the question of, are they still able to get the help? I would say they are right now. They, they have less freedoms. They don't have the choice of what lunch they want to eat. They don't have the choice of, hey, today I'm going to go be active as opposed to being academic. They have to go to their RAP and that's not an option at this point in time. So, they are able to get the help they need.
Well, and I understand that going to RAP and the attendance piece there, I'm not, I guess, understanding the, when they, when they get to RAP, that attendance is taken. If they need to go to another staff member for assistance, I understand that they're getting a pass and so forth. But, how does that staff member know that they're incoming so that there's like a second attendance beacon so that a student isn't falling through the cracks of attending the RAP, getting marked as present? But, then how do we know that that next piece, that, that part of the tracking, I guess, is what I'm kind of just wondering about?
So, they have to, our passes are pink at our level. That pass will be signed by the RAP teacher. They take that pink pass, they go to Mr. Johnson's room, they work with Mr. Johnson. He signs the pink pass again that says time left and they need to go back to their RAP advisory.
I know. Thank you. If you could give us that information just so that we as a board can continue to hear how the decisions that we've made are playing out, that would be helpful.
I can do that. Ken, was there an ACT test? Was that offered also to sophomores? If they wanted to, like, kind of pre-test those students? Pre-ACT as well, right? Yep. And that, it actually, I don't believe has been offered yet. It'll be offered in the middle of March. I think, I don't, don't quote me on this, but what comes to mind right away is March fifteenth. It'll be offered right here in the, you're going to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's work.
Thank you and good evening. Much of my items are on the agenda for tonight, so I will try to be brief. I'll start off with the COVID update. This last week, we had a total of eleven cases. We are still dealing with, you know, absenteeism with our staff and I've been very grateful to our staff to continue to help each other out so that we can, you know, continue to have interpersonal learning. So, from that standpoint, we're making it work. But, we are starting to see the, the total number of cases that come across our desk, it's going down. As you guys know from last month, we approved the policy for the Minnesota OSHA update. I think I informed you guys, but that is not happening. So, I thought I would just inform you from last meeting, that is not happening and we'll see where that goes from, from this day forward. Last month, we also talked a moment about the SRO. That most conversations continue to have with the city of Glencoe. We had a scheduled meeting, but we needed to postpone that one. So, we will be meeting with them and continuing to have that discussion. I did have a chance to talk with the county sheriff and, and we're going to continue to have conversations a little bit with, with where that goes. When it all comes down to it, it's going to come down to scheduling, logistics and funding, whether we can get this happening. The, the, the good thing is, is that I think everybody sees and understands the value of the SRO and, and now it's just a matter of, of trying to see what we can do to figure that out. But, it takes time because of all of the different scheduling and finding the right things. But, they just, the county does not have an SRO officer. They, they basically have a DARE officer that was retired and basically handed back. And one of the challenges that come with the county is, is the fact that they have a certain bucket of dollars that helps fund this person and according to the, to the sheriff, they didn't necessarily know along that funding will last. And so, you know, that's something that, that we'll continue to have those conversations. But, just wanted to have an update a little bit here with, with the SRO. We had a community schools meeting last month where we had our students and, and career conversation. We had over a hundred people in our last community schools. It was a wonderful event. We are now looking forward to our next event, which will be on April fourteenth. We're, we're already sending out information on that. That's going to be our career and job fair here at GSL and hopefully it's going to be a great turnout. So, if you do have anybody in the business world that would like to set up a booth and hang out here for a little bit on April fourteenth for an hour and a half for our kids to be able to visit, let me know and we will, we'll go from there. I also continue to work with the county. We've, we're looking at turning the, the little portion, it's about an eight, ten acre, eight, eight acre parcel. And I know we'll talk a little bit about that with the improvement of the, of the land lease, but into some CRP stuff. And so, we're, we're still working on, on those steps of things and, and being able to hopefully still have that, get into, into the CRP program and get that because it, it just seems like it works. The, the, the ground is not great. It's a lot of time under water. And in talking with some of the people in the county, they think it's a really good spot for that. So, and that's just going to be south of our new road. If, if you guys are familiar with that, out in our field, it just kind of will connect right into the, the curve yield that we already have.
South, south of the new part here.
South of the new part here. Yep. So...
And that will then go right up into the wetland?
Right, next to the wetland. Yep. And, and it just seems like it's a perfect spot to do that little bit because of just the weather nature of, of that ground is every spring as well. And then finally, on two, to, to, you know, to continue to promote some, you know, some fund and, and things like that, on two twenty-two of two thousand and two, we're asking any type of donations?
Twenty-two.
Two twenty-two of two thousand and twenty-two. Yes, that's right. We're, we're doing the gift card challenge on Tuesday and we're, we're trying to give away a bunch of gift cards to, to our students and, you know, basically show our appreciation to them and their hard work and, and want to say thank you to all the people that are, that are donating so far. If you're interested in donating, get that to me by Friday and, and we'll, we'll be handing those things out. We'll have some drawings and that kind of stuff when we come back from our little mini break that we have with President's Day and it should be a fun, fun day. And then finally, Happy Valentine's Day. We're here at a board meeting on Valentine's Day, so.
Chris, I just have a question on SRO. So, you indicated you're talking to the county. What's your involvement? Does the other school district, Hutchinson, Lister Prairie have that I always, you know, certainly with potential advantage, but can the county, could it be an option in McCloud County?
I don't believe Lister Prairie has SRO, but Hutchinson does have SRO with the city of Hutchinson. But, there is no SRO with the county at this time. They would have to actually add an officer. Then how do you go about that process? But, that's kind of what those conversations are all about at this point in time to see where that would go to. And that was the first thing that, that the sheriff did say is, you know, if, if we do do this, what does that mean for the other school districts? Then maybe not even necessarily other school districts, what about the other schools? And so, where we go with that is unknown at this time, but we are continuing to have that conversation.
So, you're talking about having a, a school resource officer through the county?
Well...
Not, because in the past, we have one through the city.
City of Glencoe, it's just an option that we wanted to explore. That we, we would talk to the county to say, hey, what about the county? And, and being able to have that county, part of the reason of being able to do that is we do have several cities that are represented in the county. So, do you kind of say, hey, this is a, a countywide program. We have several cities that, that help pay for that. Is this a, a way about going about it? And, you know, the answer was just a preliminary conversation of let's keep talking. We'll see where that goes. I don't know, but there is no SRO. So, putting that into the step of adding an officer, how does that look? There's just a lot of work that would have to go about that. But, we've had the preliminary conversation and we'll, we'll talk again.
Have you had the conversation with the city of Glencoe?
Yes.
As you're saying, at the last, at the last city council meeting that I, that I watched, that's what they said was they, they're, they're talking to GSL.
We have been talking about that. Yep. Yep. And so, we're just having a good, positive conversation with everybody at this point in time, seeing where it would be best suited and, and seeing where we can make it logistically work. That's the, the thing is, is it's the logistics, it's the funding, it's the schedule, it's the person, it's the training, you know, lots of things that have to happen before it actually happens. But, we've got to continue the conversation and we're going to continue to do that.
Part of the county conversation too came from, I talked to a good friend of mine who is a chief of police at McCloud. Totally different world down there, but his kids go to Rockford area and they, they do employ two SRO officers through that school. One is in Wright County and I believe, I must say, Carver maybe or Carver? Not sure what their district's covered, but they do their SROs through the county. And that's kind of where the conversation started. And I don't know how they funded there that we didn't get into it, do it in a research. That's kind of where I heard it from.
So, if we do do enter into contract like that with McCloud County, is that something that GSL has to pay for?
Well, we're going to have to pay for this at some point in time regardless of who we partner with. There, there's going to need to be some funding that goes along with that. And again, I don't even know where to begin because when you even look at some of the other SRO agreements, they're all across the board in terms of what the schools contribute. they're all across the board in terms of what the school's contribution is. Of course, we're not buying an officer for a 12-month contract. We basically need them for 172 days. But you can't just hire an SRO for 172 days because they're going to need to work full-time, 12 months with that. And so how does that look? And that's part of the conversations and that's part of the logistics that come along with kind of figuring this out.
Is that something, I'm sure Michelle, you probably have not even had this much of it before, but is that something that ESTR funds could be used for or would that be health and safety?
We'll come under our safe schools levies, we're going to fund it.
Yeah, but ESTR funds would be running out. We've been talking about this is something that we would like to have sustainable. And that's where you get into your safe schools dollars because we know the goals are going to be there every year. Where the ESTRs are not, we don't want to set up a program that's going to be here for a year or two and then have to cut it. That's not the goal of doing anything. So like I said, we're going to continue on those conversations. I know that it's going to be somewhat of a challenge, but we'll see where things are at and I'll continue to update you guys.
Michelle, does the city and county budget calendar go different than the school district calendar for budgeting?
Yeah, both your city and your county run on a calendar year, January to December. So they're approving their levies at the same time that the school district does in December. But then our money that's approved in December is for the next fiscal year. The city and counties, so they're doing their budgets, you know, that start of the fall. They're approving their budget at the same time they're approving their levies for the calendar year. So for a city or county to take a look at this, take a look at the request, try to budget additional dollars to fund an SRO, they would then build that into their budget, you know, by December or early fall to get that into their budget. So then it's ready to go at a calendar year.
So if we as a school district would want to do something by the beginning of our next school year, hypothetically, the county and our city would have had to have built that into their current budget for this particular calendar year?
Yes and no. You know, they have money set aside for different things that come up like, you know, like we do. We always have money there. I have no idea how the city's police fund budget works. You know, if they have an officer that leaves, you bring in an officer that doesn't pay as much as someone that leaves. I don't know all the details of how that budget piece works in the city's budgeting tool. So it's possible that, you know, they would have funds that say, yep, we can fund this for half a year or two. We can build it into our regular budget. One of the things we're finding with SRO, both Chris has talked to city or county, it's a lot of training to get a qualified SRO with training. You know, anywhere, you know, depending on who they would hire or could hire. If they're not coming in with that training, it could be up to like a nine-month training course because it's very detailed skills to work in a school as an SRO. It's not just plopping a police officer in a building, even though you could do that, kind of like a security officer type thing. But you want to do that program the right way and, you know, Mr. Floss would have a lot more knowledge about that. But you want them trained with skills that can work with those students as well.
I guess I'm just thinking calendar-wise, I mean, have we missed the vote as far as letting the city or the county know to kind of start putting that into their budget already? To your point, I mean, they can move money around and so forth, but as we know, staffing is a unique thing that you kind of have to plan for and budget for, so.
I wouldn't say we missed the bullet. It's harder than this bullet that you didn't know we were supposed to get on. It's, you know, we've seen these behaviors kind of develop now as kids have come back from COVID. And that's why they've really seen, we've seen some of these issues, not just in schools, in the public, in the communities, you know, all over the place. We've seen some different behaviors come up. So, you know, I don't think Mr. Floss could have predicted, you know, this time last year that said, yeah, we're really going to need an SRO, we better start talking to the county. This just develops, you know, and that's where we start having the conversations now. It's like, okay, well, we're doing the research right now, we're talking to individuals, you know, seeing what options are out there and then hopefully get something in place.
I guess when I said missing the bullet, I just meant.
I was just talking to you.
I just meant timing-wise, not that we missed the bullet and that we didn't see this sort of coming. Because behaviors have been misbehaving, have been trickling up. It isn't like it just started happening or anything like that. The numbers are starting to grow or continuing to grow. So I just meant timing-wise with regard to budget. Is there something, Chris, that we would include Steven Seminary?
Potentially.
Because, you know, in the past, they've helped, I believe, fund a counselor until we were able to put a time to our budgeting so that we could continue the continuation of it. They helped us to kind of develop and get something started. Wasn't that a counselor or social worker or something?
Yeah, that's exactly right. But that's why we've been talking about, you know, when we have those conversations with the city or county, we've been saying we got state schools money as opposed to, because that's something that we think that we could use year after year after year after year without having to put it back into. But in terms of saying, hey, we would like to put a portion of our general fund budget to bridge the gap, potentially that would be a conversation that you could have until that could get put in. The balancing act of all this is where does the pie look? You know, how much will we put in? You know, if we came to the city of Glencoe and said, we're going to hire, you know, we're going to fund 100% of SRO, it's pretty easy to add an SRO. Well, it doesn't make logistical sense for us to pay for something and we're going to use it 172 days. And so we need to find that balance of where things are at. And then what are they going to have in their budget to say, hey, we want to have this? Because they just went and got themselves a new officer from my understanding, you know, which is not necessarily connected to SRO. So, you know, where are they at in potentially having another officer in there? And so that's where the conversations just need to continue to happen. It's a good conversation. It's something that, you know, we're continuing to look at and work on. It's just a lot because there's so many logistical things that come into play of being able to do that. And so.
Are we able to kind of define what's our need to the city or to the county, like maximum of hours? Or are we able to kind of define what our need is?
I think so because we would like an SRO here during the course of the school day. And part of the main reason is to do that prevention piece, right? I mean, that's one of the biggest things that the SRO does. If there's still something that they need to come up, you know, they still will come up and assist us. But it's always that reactionary piece versus being proactive. Which is why we want to have this conversation because we would like to get ahead of this and, you know, as much as we possibly can. It's a challenge to get all those dominoes to line up. And as I explained, it's logistics, it's budget, it's all those different things comes into play. Philosophically, most of us have a really good vision and we're all on the same page. But unfortunately, that doesn't necessarily pay the bills. And so we gotta, we gotta get all those pieces and to do that at this point in time, we just need to continue to have that conversation. And even if it takes us an extra year, you know, to do that, then it takes us that. But hopefully the idea is that it's a position that if it ever does happen, that it's something that's sustainable.
Does that probably realistic that for about two years out?
I, you know, Jamie, I don't know how to answer that question, but if you want me to be honest, I would probably say yes.
I want you to be honest.
Yeah. I wish it would be sooner. I mean, I wish I could get this thing done here in the fall and here we are. And we've even had conversations about what kind of hybrid or can we, you know, get some more time of officers here and those types of things and how that looks. And that's where just, you know, because of the positive relationship with the city and we'll continue to have those conversations. We've now had a conversation with the county and how that looks. You know, they told us, when you need us up at Silver Lake, because that's their jurisdiction, we are there for you. And we will work with you. You know, and obviously that's one of those pieces as well with the SRO. We've said from the very start, we would like to have this position if it ever does happen. They are going to be the person that's going to be assisting up at Silver Lake so that consistency piece can happen. We'll continue to talk and continue to update you guys.
One contract that I did get my hands on, it does, basically the school district pays for 10 months and the city pays for two in that city itself, the way they pay for their SROs. And the city also buys squad power, the uniforms, the whole training, that behavior, all that. And the school pays for 10 months of salary. So the city does take a pretty good chunk of that, out of that, you know, paying for salary compared to the car. And maybe that's what it's all about. But I think it's a good thing we're having this now and a year from now. Unfortunately, it's kind of where we're at. We need to get this moving and we do have it moving. All right. Any other questions from Mr. Saad? Any committee reports?
I'd like to report here. I attended the Little Pro Tell Media Network Board Meeting. February 2nd, it was a annual reorganization meeting, so we went over the preliminary budget. Not to be wrong, speaking of which, we've got another.
We also met with the Policy Committee, Jason, and myself, but we prefer last call. At least, I think we suggested, I'll take a little bit, just a tweet with the Lakeside being kind of different. Different, just to check the date, that began this last year, they really seemed like that. That's all I can suggest with this comment here, but we have a conversation, it seems that everyone's in agreement.
Jamie and I were at facilities meeting and Michelle pretty much nailed all that stuff.
We had a leadership meeting last Tuesday morning and Bill pretty much touched on everything that we've had to discuss.
Single budget and financing was covered as well, thank you, Michelle.
All right, we'll move on to approving the consent agenda. Action item. Motion by Jamie, second by Alicia. All in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
Full same sign. Own business none at this time. New business, site of name. U.S. Solar, action item is the recommendation of Superintendent Saad to enter into an agreement with U.S. Solar by subscribing to the Community Solar Garden. Julian Hammonds of U.S. Solar attended the January meeting, January school board meeting, who outlined how the program works and the credit savings that GSL could save over the years. The exact project site will be finalized this summer. The Solar Garden is expected to be online this fall and will start generating credits through the school. Go ahead, motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Jamie, second by Clark. Any discussion? And just to let everybody know, Julian is here. If we have any questions directly for her, thank you for staying this long.
Oh my gosh, of course. If anything, this job is not important, like local politics, what the school boards are. Because we guys are the ones that get the stuff done, so always have going. Yeah, any questions? I did discuss with Michelle, I do think we're moving forward with the USS Waterfowl site. So that is the one that's in Silver Lake, super close. The only thing that might, we might not be your full subscription in there, you might get split between two just because we've been continuing to fill that capacity. But I hope to say that part of, it's not all a part of your subscription there so that you can go to it closer to the school. Awesome. Well, I'm super excited to work with you guys, so thank you so much.
Hold on, we got a vote.
Oh, okay.
So I have a motion by Jamie, a second by Clark. To prove the U.S. Solar's discount value, the source is subscription agreement and agreement with Northern State's power company. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same sign.
There it is.
Thanks for all your work.
I have the approved revision to the 2023, 2223 calendar and adopt 2324 calendar. Action item included number two. During the meeting conferred, meeting, the 2223 calendar was revised and the 2324 calendar was repaired. It is the meeting confers recommendation that the board approve the 2223 revision and adopt the 2324 school calendar. Revision for 23, 2223, Tuesday, September 6th is the first day of class for 7th through 12th grade and grades K through 6 check-in day. And then Wednesday, September 7th is the first day of classes for K 6. And for 2324, the highlights include school starts on Tuesday, September 5th for 7th through 12th. Wednesday, September 6th, 4K through 6, and I would imagine that's September 5th will be used as. Winter break from Friday, December 22nd, 23th through Monday, January 1st, 24th. No school March 28th through Monday, April 1st, 24th, that's Easter is on that March 30th. The last day of school for students is Wednesday, May 29th. And the last day for staff is Thursday, May 30th. Graduation is Friday, May 31st, 2024. Superintendent Saad recommends approval of the 2223 revision and the adopted 2324 school calendar as proposed. Do I have a motion? Motion by Donna, second. Second by Alicia. Any discussion? All right, I have a motion by Donna, second by Alicia. To approve the 2323 revision and adopt the 2324 school calendar. All in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
Full same sign, we'll prepare. Agricultural land lease, action item. Business Manager Sanders has prepared a two-year lease for the 38.2 acres of agricultural land located north of the high school with Stewie Farms LLC. The lease for 22 and 23 will be $150 per acre, will generate $5,746 each year. Superintendent Saad recommends approval of agricultural land lease. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jamie, a second.
I'll second.
Second by Clark. Any questions or discussion?
Just one point, you know, we put the 38.2 acres in there. If the CRP land gets all ceded, we'll adjust that amount of the acres so that might decrease something to this far as the dollar amount. And Chad's aware of that, we went through it all the other day when he was in. So that's based on what is currently out there and then we do a final increase after he gets everything planned. But he's aware of it, that Chris is working on it, so he won't put seed in there. That's the one thing you got to make sure is that he's not seeding it or working it and he's going to pay him back for that right.
Okay. I have a motion by Jamie and a second by Clark. The lease of 38.2 acres of agricultural land located north of the high school, Stewie Farms LLC, for two years at $150 per acre. In 22 and 23, for a total of $5,730 each year. Do I have a motion to approve? All in favor, excuse me. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same sign, motion carried. Education Minnesota, I have the education Minnesota, Glencoe, Silver Lake, additional comp hours, action item. Chris Beck, President of the Glencoe Silver Lake Teachers Union is requesting a change in how many hours of comp. Intensitory time is accrued. Apparently the maximum allowed is 16 hours. They would like to change this to 32 temporarily until the end of 2122 school year. Do I have a motion?
Sure.
Mr. Clark, a second. Alicia?
Yeah.
Second by Alicia. Any questions or discussion?
I'll just give you a little background. Mr. Beck came to me and just asked the, you know, the thoughts of this. Basically, our teachers have been wonderful in helping out. And if you're looking at this from a standpoint that says, this will potentially just kick the can and have more, the answer is yes. But it's our way of being able to say, or at least my recommendation for you is our way to say thank you to our teachers for doing this. Currently, when they get to 16, they have to either take the days or a day or cash that all in. Or some of them have said, is there any way for us, I'll continue to sub, but I would like to build that up past 16. And, you know, we kind of worked something out and proposed this. It is theoretically opening up the contract. It is an MOU that we put together. And at the end of this school year, if they do happen to have. And at the end of this school year, if they do happen to have more than sixteen hours, it goes back down to where they have to cash it in and then they start with sixteen, similar to what the language is.
There's a sunset clause.
So there's a sunset clause. What it will allow is, uh, 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 some of our staff members, you, you know, they potentially could be gone, you know, in April and May. And, and others will have to kind of help out. But, uh, I, I recommend it because they have been wonderful and, and, and just really appreciate everything that they've, that they've done.
Other staff members probably wouldn't be able to get ordered open.
Without question, um, without our staff, we wouldn't be, uh, in person every single day. So they, they've been the reason that we've been able to stay open every single day in person.
Any questions? I have a motion by Clark, second by Alicia, to temporary change the GSL Teacher Union compensatory time accrued from sixteen to thirty-two hours until the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Item B, Superintendent Contract, action item. Board Negotiators Lindman and Lutke have negotiated a new three-year contract with Superintendent Sanju. Recommend its approval. The contract is from July one, twenty-two through July, or June thirty, twenty-twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by John, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Clark. I'll give you a little information. On, uh, Superintendent's, uh, contract, the salary increase was one point eight percent, uh, first year, two point one eight percent second year, two point two five percent third year. The total package is six point three nine percent over three years. And that's an average of two point one three percent per year. Uh, no language changes, uh, adjustments to some, uh, four oh three B, um, a slight adjustment to that and a slight adjustment to insurance to make sure that it's, it's covered. But these, all these changes are included in the total package. Any other questions for Mr. Lindman himself? Very none. Uh, I have a motion by John, second by Clark, to approve the three-year contract with Superintendent Chris Sanju from July one, twenty-two to June thirty, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Uh, I M F, Business Manager Contract, action item. Board Negotiators Lindman and Lutke have negotiated a new three-year contract with Business Manager Sanders and recommend its approval. The contract is from July one, twenty-twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
No.
Motion by Alicia, do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Donna. I'll give a little information. Business Manager Sanders, again, it's a six point three four percent over three years, uh, two point one three percent per year on average. Um, salary increase, uh, for the first year is two point five, um, second year, two point five, third year, two point one percent. No language changes and a slight adjustment between insurance and career and no dollar changes. Any other questions or discussion? Very none, I have a motion by Alicia, second by Donna, to approve three-year contract with Business Manager Sanders from July one, twenty-two to June thirty, twenty-five. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Item G, Through Early Childhood School Readiness Director Contract, action item. Superintendent Sanju and school or negotiators Lindman and Lindman recommend approving Alicia Bestby's Early Childhood School Readiness Contract from year July one, twenty-twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by Clark, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alicia. Chris, you did a lot of the work on, with Alicia and Chris for planning her.
Yeah, I can go ahead and, and as you can see, the, the date, you know, last year, if you recall, we just did a one-year contract. Um, and then as the, the months have gone, we, we've connected, we've taught, and, and next thing you know, here we are. And so we're, we're basically doing the exact same contract again. Uh, no language changes other than, uh, just a little increase in the salary. That, uh, total package is a three point five six for one year. When you add the two together, it was, if you look back at it, it would have been a six point zero three total package increase. So it's right in line with, with the others. Um, and, uh, it comes to the end here of this year, and so we'll, we'll be, um, going through this process really soon again. But, uh, it does get it caught up here and, and, um, reset.
Any questions for, um, Alicia Bestby's contract? Very none, I have a motion by Clark, second by Alicia, to approve the one-year contract with Early Childhood School Readiness Director Alicia Bestby from July one, twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-two. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Item H, ECFE School Readiness Inter Sub Coordinator Contract, action item. Superintendent Sanju recommends approval of a five or five-week ECFE School Readiness Inter Sub Coordinator Contract with Michelle Marty. This contract will be in effect from January twenty-fourth until March fourth. This position will provide coverage in the absence of the ECFE Senior Director, who is on FMLA. Michelle Marty is currently the ECFE School Readiness Secretary and will continue to do those duties. This contract will be for thirty hours per week, thirty dollars, thirty dollars, for a total of forty-five hundred dollars. Any administrative duties during that timeframe will be handled by Superintendent Sanju and or Community Ed Director Matt Monchell. Do I have a motion? I'll make that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John. Any discussion? Any question? Very none, I have a motion by Ja, uh, Jason, second by John, to approve the five-week ECFE School Readiness Inter Sub Coordinator Contract with Michelle Marty from January twenty-four, twenty-two through March fourth, twenty-twenty-two. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Uh, I M I, Parent Professional Hours, action item. Principal Butler requests approval for some additional time for parent professional that is supporting the PM Crossing Guard for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Superintendent Sanju recommends approval of the increased hours. Uh, parent professionals, Angela Becker, both from seven point two five to seven point five, uh, proposed hours, and that's a point two five change. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by Clark and a second by Alicia. Any discussion?
Just to let you guys know, all these times signs happen, um, and we just need to make sure that what they have from a, you know, hourly rate matches what you guys have approved. So this happens, I'm, I'm okay, so.
I have a motion by Clark, second by Alicia, to approve the additional time for parent professional that is a PM Crossing Guard. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Item J, Approval of Triimester Three Hours for English and Second Language Teacher, action item. Superintendent Sanju recommends approving to keep Paulina Kohan ESL teacher at point seven one for the third trimester of the twenty-two, or twenty-one, twenty-two school year. With the previous schedule, she was unable to meet the needs of ESL students and assist with the acting success while of GSL. Do I have a motion?
So.
A motion by Alicia, second by Donna. Any discussion?
If you guys recall, we came to you, I believe it was back in November before the second try, to increase her from a point five to a point seven one. So this is basically now saying, we'd like to keep her at a point seven one. We only did it for the try because of, you know, watching the students, depending on if they, um, change. The student number is, is the same, and, and so we would like to keep this the same till the end of the year. And then, uh, this will be a position that, you know, was a part of our discussion with our, uh, school planning process to see where this will be and hopefully will get accepted and ready for the, the whole year.
Thank you. The motion by Alicia, second by John, to approve the ESL teacher Paulina Kohan hours for try three. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Item K, Non-Renewables, action item. Is the recommendation of Superintendent Sanju or Superintendent to terminate and non-renew the following pro vocationary teachers? Uh, Patrice Mikulajek, point five FTE title teacher. Megan Nelson, point five FTE, uh, early childhood. Sarah Demorowski.
Demorowski.
Uh, one point oh FTE special ed teacher, uh, Ryan Whalen, one point oh FTE student academic and social emotional support specialist. Uh, just a known East motion is to be adopted by a majority vote, call a vote. Do I have a motion for this?
Before you start, can I just give you a quick poll?
Give me time.
Okay.
Let's get a motion.
Okay. Done on each one of them?
Yeah, and I'll, I want you to talk on each one, so that when we go through, I can just go through.
Okay. They're gonna be the same reason on every one?
Unless you tell me here. Um, no, I want you to talk on each bullet as part of Patricia and Megan, I mean, if you have something to say on each one, once we read them. Do I have a motion?
So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John. I have a motion by Clark, second by John. Any discussion, Chris, you have some explanation of this?
So these are all set because of licensure. That's why, it is our hope that each one of them will be coming back, but they don't hold the correct licensure. They were under a variance, and so by law, you had to put them on non-renewal termination. Um, and it is our hope, they've all done a great job. And, you know, depending on the whole process, it's just part of the process, but we hope that all of them will be coming back.
I'm gonna go for each one of these, huh?
Okay. Correct.
All right. So now we have a motion by Clark, second by John, to terminate and non-renew, uh, for the Patricia Mikulajek, point five FTE at the end of the twenty-two, twenty-one school year. Now, Donna, will you please take a roll call vote?
Please indicate for or against Jamie or Clark or John or Jason.
For.
Alicia.
For.
And me for.
Thank you, Donna. Um, now I have a, I have a motion, okay. All right, do I have a motion for the next item?
So.
A motion by Alicia, do I have a second? Second by John. To terminate and non-renew Megan Nelson, point four FTE at the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Donna, will you take a roll call vote?
Please indicate, indicate for or against Jamie or Clark or John or Jason.
For.
Alicia.
For.
And Donna for.
Motion carries. Uh, do I have a motion for, um, Sarah Demorowski?
So.
Motion by John, do I have a second?
Sir.
Second by Clark. To terminate and non-renew Sarah Demorowski, one point oh FTE at the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Donna, will you please take a roll call vote?
Please indicate for or against Jamie or Clark or John or Jason.
For.
Alicia.
For.
And me, Donna, for.
Motion carries, it's zero. Uh, do I have a motion for the Ryan Whalen?
Second.
Motion by Alicia, do I have a second? Second by John. To terminate and non-renew Ryan Whalen, one point oh FTE at the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Uh, Donna, will you please take a roll call vote?
Please indicate for or against Jamie or Clark or John or Jason.
For.
Alicia.
For.
And me, Donna, for.
Motion carries, thank you. Item L, Pursuit of Policy, action item. Is the recommendation of the Policy Committee to bring back the following policies for adoption at the next school board meeting? Five oh three student attendance, five eighteen D and R and D and I orders, five twenty-three policies incorporated by reference, five twenty-six gazing provision, five twenty-four unpaid meal charges, six oh four instructional curriculum, six eleven homeschooling, six eighteen assessment of student achievement, six twenty-three mandatory summer school instruction, seven twenty vending machines. Motion by John, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Clark. Any questions or discussion? Very none, now I have a motion by John, second by Clark, to bring back policies listed above for the adoption at the, at the next school board meeting. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Uh, do I have a resolution to accept donations, action item, and L? Is the recommendation of Superintendent Sanju to adopt the resolution to accept donations? Do I have a motion?
So.
I have a motion by Donna, second by Alicia. To accept donations, any questions? Uh, very none, uh, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Item N, there's no miscellaneous at this time, um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Motion by Clark, do I have a second? Second by John. To adjourn at seven fifty PM. Please indicate or please. All in favor, indicate.